Okay, now that we're all back and situated, Jennifer, are you ready to start the workshop?
Yes, good morning, commissioners. I am ready. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Okay, so you have in front of you the 2023 proposed budget for the general fund. We are beginning with beginning fund balance of 26 million, and I'm still comfortable with that number. We have revenues coming in to the general fund in 2023 estimated at forty-two million, four hundred sixty-eight thousand and eleven dollars. And we have salaries and benefits at this time estimated at thirty-one million, five hundred sixty-three thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars. We have operating expenditures estimated at fourteen million, nine hundred sixty-two thousand, twelve dollars. And we have ending fund balance estimated at twenty-one million, nine hundred forty-two thousand, thirteen dollars. At this time, the estimated resources to be used in the general fund from inner period equity from 2023 is four million, fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars. So that's the amount that we are using in cash, the estimated amount. And some of the things that I wanted to point out that have changed from last time we met on the budget were in the commissioner's budget, I've added twenty thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars. I've added three thousand for travel and then seventeen thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars for state retirement. So that's Fund O-80 or Department O-80. So their new expenditures are estimated at three hundred ninety thousand, six fifteen. I also want to point out that the property tax needs to be updated, and I have not updated that yet. That's in the treasures revenue for the general fund property tax. And I have those resolutions for the property tax being looked over by Sierra Stiles in the treasure or in the assessor's office. And currently, we're looking at an increase over last year's, or I'm sorry, over the current budgeted property tax of thirty-one thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars in current expense. And then in roads, an increase of the current budget of one hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars. One other change from last weeks, or I'm sorry, two weeks ago budget workshops, we had the non-union across-the-board increase of 1.75%. So those numbers are included in the salaries and benefits for the general fund, eighty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars was added. And then in the special funds, fifty thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars was added for a total of one hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred sixty-two dollars. And then I believe I brought this up at the previous budget workshop, but I wanted to bring it up again in the sheriff's office. We have the jail medical costs are currently budgeted at five hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred. And the increase, I believe, is estimated at one hundred and forty-six thousand. So so we're looking at six hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred in possible jail medical cost budgeted expenditures, but only only five hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred is included in this budget. And so I just wanted to point out that we may need may need to add an additional hundred and forty-six thousand to this to this budget.
You say may?
Yeah, I'm not positive that that is is going to to happen. And so so I I had a note that that we may need to do that. So I wanted to point that out.
When would that decision be made? When will we be making that decision?
I'm not sure. I mean, we can, we can definitely do an amendment next year, but I wanted to just make sure that everybody was aware that 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 may need to be added.
No, that was good enough. That's what I was asking. Is it something that you're looking to do through amendment? So we just have to keep it in our minds.
Yeah, at this time, that's what I I think would be the best thing to do. So moving on from the from the general fund.
Mark, did you have your hand up?
I did. Thank you, Commissioner Shutey. I just wanted to to remind the commission that our Chief Hanson came to the commission and talked about the provider that came to Corrections and said, hey, I'm having difficulty continuing to keep staff to provide the level of service that I'm contracted for because of these rates. And so they gave us a proposal. Kevin brought that the commission and the commission said, we've got a contract through 2023 with you. So my concern is is that this individual may default on the contract and not be able to provide the services. And we'd have to come up with something different. So Chief Hanson went out and did some research on costs in neighboring counties for these similar services. And I believe he provided that to the individual commissioners so you could kind of see what those numbers look like. We're actually getting a very good deal right now. But be prepared that if that contractor is no longer able to provide those services, then we are going to have an increase. And so I just wanted to keep that at the forefront here and and ask Jen to to just keep it in front of the commissioners so you didn't forget about it.
Thank you, Mark. And moving on to the special funds. So we are looking at revenues of one hundred and nine million, three hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars. And then expenditures of the same, and that does include beginning and ending fund balances. So if we look at let's go to find some of this. The beginning fund balances are estimated at forty-eight million, two hundred twenty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-six dollars. Total revenues coming in of sixty-one million, one hundred five thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars for our total revenues of one hundred and nine million, three thirty-four, three ninety-four. Total salaries and benefits in the special and other funds are fourteen estimated at fourteen million, two hundred forty-eight thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars. And total operating expenditures are estimated at sixty-five million, six hundred twenty-two thousand, four hundred seventy-four dollars. And ending fund balances are estimated at twenty-nine million, four hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars. And total expenditures then one hundred and nine million, three hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars. The total budget revenues and expenditures, including the general fund, is estimated at at this time, one hundred and seventy-seven million, eight hundred two thousand, four hundred and five dollars. And some of the things that I wanted to point out from the last budget workshop is that I increased the ERNR revenue rates to match the actual rates that are being paid into ERNR from roads and the utility funds. So I increased the rate to two million, three hundred thirty-nine thousand, eighty-eight dollars. And another thing I wanted to point out is that the Teamster and operator contract amounts, which would be funds like the road fund and the utility funds. Those are the ones that that would affect. The Teamster and operator contract amounts are not included in these budget numbers. And I will try to update that before the budget is adopted on December 5th. Or hopefully, it'll be adopted on December 5th. Island Lake, I wanted to point this out, the Island Lake LMD, which is this fund 199, has chosen not to not to renew their levy for 2023. And so you can see their revenues here are only a hundred dollars, but they do have a carryover in that fund cash. And so they may choose to pick that up later on, but I wanted to point that out that they did not choose to renew their levy for that lake.
How was that decision made? Do you know?
They have a contact there, and I know Diane was in touch with, I believe, the person that's in charge of that or that lake management district is Todd. I'm not sure how to pronounce his last name, but it's F A G U E. And Diane, if you're on, if you want to speak to your congressman with him or that anybody else at the Island Lake Management District.
Yeah, I contacted contacted Todd because he's in charge of their citizens group back probably late summer. And then I know there wasn't a turn. I think Steve Whitehouse also lives out there, and he had contacted Tim Whitehead. And Todd and I talked a few times, and I I told him the process and what they need to do. And then they had asked, you know, what happens with their existing money, which it stays with them. And so and I never did hear anything from them. They never petitioned to restart that process. And I do think, you know, they've I think the first time they did an LMD was maybe 2008, and it does seem there was a time period where they let it go for a couple of years, and they just use their cash on hand, and then they went ahead and did it again.
Because I was thinking, didn't that come before us at one point? And then when we did, when we ended the Skokomish, wasn't that a action from the commission?
The Skokomish Flood District is different than the LMDs because we have three lake management districts.
Okay, so it was different. Okay.
Yeah, we have, we have Spencer Lake, Mason Lake, and Island Lake. And Island Lake, now they're the ones that just they finished their 10-year term this year in '22.
Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
So the last thing that I wanted to point out before we move on to PLRs and FTEs is under the road and utilities, so we have the million eighty thousand for that's going back into Public Works from the levy shift, the amount that we shifted last year. And Loretta was going to be prepared to speak to that, but I know she's been doing some other things. I'm not sure if she's on or or not.
Well, if, oh, I see Loretta. Go ahead.
Good morning, commissioners. Yeah, Mike and I both reviewed some options with Mark last week, I believe it was. And there's no lack of options, and we are happy to prepare or present a table, I guess, whatever would be most useful to commissioners. But our thought was that we would bring forward options to tip cap at their next regular meeting in mid-December and bring forward tip caps recommendations along with our recommendations for commissioners' consideration, if that sounds like a good approach.
So two ways we can do it right now, if I'm not mistaken, Jennifer, is we could take that money, put it into a New Roads for Economic Development, or we can just keep it in the funding balance and do a supplemental after it's decided to establish. Am I understanding that correct?
Yes, you can put it into the ending fund balance for New Roads projects, but I believe in this budget, we needed that amount in the the
In the ending fund balance?
Yes, we call it the unreserved, but it's not truly unreserved because everything in roads is reserved for roads or restricted for roads. So I would recommend, I guess, leaving it where it is for for now in the ending fund balance.
Well, we're gonna find at the end of this one, it's gonna be different too. So at the end of this year, we'll see, but I'm comfortable leaving it in the ending fund balance.
Okay, and commissioners, did you want to see Loretta's proposal for that? For that million eighty?
Yeah, I mean, I would, you know, I mean, that was my my hope for today was that we would have at least some discussion of what those options might be. You know, and I guess my concern is kind of twofold. One, I want to make sure that, you know, we have the capacity to utilize these funds and actually deliver on things. And having a sense of that, I think, is really helpful before I make that decision because of the second thing I'm going to say, which is I know that there's still a number of outstanding FTE requests and some PLRs there. And as much as I want to see the levy shift, you know, zero it out, and we just stick with the diversion. You know, depending on the direction the commission goes, if we want to give ourselves some breathing room, we could, we could we can dial back that levy shift incrementally over the next, you know, couple of budgets in order to give ourselves some breathing room based on whatever FTE decisions that we make today, as well as whatever kind of however, we're feeling about the economic outlook over the next 12 to 18 months and wanting to make sure that we have some general fund breathing room. So I I kind of wanted to have that information at hand so that I could factor that into my decision-making.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and stop my share in Loretta if you want to share your screen.
Let's see. And actually, I think Mike's got the list. Mike, do you have the the word document available to share? Yeah. Bear with me for a minute, commissioners.
It's a strong man to admit it. While we're waiting, Commissioner Shutey, based on what you had just mentioned, one of those options could look like this too. We continue to move forward with this if we don't know what we're going to do, especially until it goes through a tip cap and et cetera. We could also keep it in the budget where it is until we find out where our ending fund balance is going to be also. And then utilize it of the ending fund balance in in a at a future point. But no, the difference is we'd have to change it through the diversion at that point, because if we set a a taxing structure, that stays.
Well, even with the diversion, that is part of that taxing structure as well.
That's true. So we kind of have to make the decision now.
Okay, commissioners, hopefully you can see Mike's screen here now. Yes?
Yep.
Okay, great.
So we just, this is just some things we went by what could happen if we had an extra million dollars. So an extra million dollars would spend would would pay for 12,500 tons of asphalt, which was about eight miles of roads. Here's a small list of roads that we do need to get some pavement on, like Lakeland Village, Timber Lakes, Belt Lakes, Harstein Island, Shorecrest. I mean, the list can go on and on. So the other option is for 20 miles of chip seal, which is most people think is boring, so we won't even talk about that. The other option is 35 miles of paved shoulders. We've been doing that around the area here, doing to connectivity and paving our shoulders. And so extending that process would be able to do roads such as John's Curry, Moore Brockdill, McCreevy Road, Basin Lake, Trails, and even Shelton Mountain would could be on that list. So those are, you know, three different types of what we could do. I've also worked, been working on our bridge program, and I have about estimated $62 million worth of bridge repair and replacement. The thirteen and a half percent matching fund of that would be over $8 million. If you've got funding for these, a lot of these bridges that I'm looking at are actually short span, so there's not federal funds for them. That'd be something we'd have to do with our local, local funds. So you know, the list is there. They're not immediate. They're not, they don't have to be done right now, but that is, you know, in the future, these are things we we need to be looking at. And then we get down to cross culverts. So we have about 3,500 cross culverts in the county. Right now, I'm working on eight specific ones that are not funded that need to be replaced within the next year or two. These all, these structures all, if we did them in-house, the the culverts themselves would have to be about $200,000 a piece just to purchase the culverts. Or looking at $500,000 a piece to have them contracted out and actually replaced. Those are immediate problems that we have. And then we have Mr. Trail's slide, that that one million dollar would could go to fixing that slide and getting that off of our off of our list. And then down here, I have New Roads, Razor Road, Romance, Log Yard, Golden Pheasant, Craig, the Ryan, Simmons Road, Island Lake, Drive SR 101. Those are all new projects, new roads that we've talked about in past. And then we have, you know, we still have our forty, what, six miles of gravel roads left over that you know, we're shooting at converting eventually. So the million dollars could go in a lot of different directions. So there's obviously a need.
So Mike, which which would which would be your priorities? I think that's that's where I'd like to, you know, take.
Yeah, our priority would be to, you know, maintain our existing roads. So the asphalt, maybe a portion of it go to the asphalt and a portion of it going to culvert replacement would be our priority at this time.
Mike, personally, I'm a big fan of, even though it's not sexy, I understand the benefits that it has. And if we have the roads that needed the chip seal, but we already have some of these things it programmed programmed in anyway. So I want to make sure we're not just supplanting funds when we're talking about this. And another thing I want to throw in there, if you're talking about paved shoulders, I don't know how you can leave out Sand Hill, Lynch and Beard's Cove, those are our heaviest used and populated tight areas.
Yeah.
So to leave that off of this list, I don't understand. It makes no sense. We've got areas where there's nobody walking. Because this could be used for walking, biking, and for parking off to the side. And also, did you include in the shoulders where that school is? The school that came in, the school that came in and requested help to to put yeah, Southside.
Pull your road. Yeah, no, that's not, that's not on this list. It's on our maintenance list.
Okay, it's already on the other one. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and this, and look, these, these are not all inclusive. This was just off the top of our heads, just just sitting down for a moment, what would you do if we had another million dollars? This is just a type of roads that we that we would look at. We, if we actually had this and prioritize it, we would actually go through a list of roads and then and then prioritize.
And Commissioners, Mark or Mike also had a great thought as well that if we're thinking that this is something that we can rely on year to year, being back within the our funds, that's one thing. If it's a one-time budget decision, then we might look differently at how we program or recommend to program these funds also. And then one other point to Commissioner Shutey's point, do we have the capacity? So, great question. Some of these projects would need to either be contracted out. So we have a limit on how we can use our county forces for for construction. And we're darn close to that limit right now. The overall limit is one point, about 1.25, I believe. And next year, we programmed right around a million dollars worth of county force work. So we would either need to reallocate where we're using our county forces or use the funds in a way that we're we're contracting out or that they're maintenance-type projects.
I'm a little curious, when it comes to actually paving, I'm looking at the names of these areas, knowing some of them very well, Larson Boulevard, Larson Lake, Lakewood Village, et cetera. What would be the reason for turning it into pavement instead of chip seal?
Typically, what we're doing is we'll look at these roads and say, okay, what would chip seal do? How how much, how many more years will it give us? And a lot of these cases, these roads are, they're far enough gone to where they actually need some structural help. And they need to be re-crowned and so they can divert the water away from the road itself too. So so that's, that's kind of what we're, if they're, if they're gone far enough, we can't just chip seal what we can, but it's just not as cost benefit.
I know we have all the alligator that pops up at the bottom of the drive into Lakeland Village, the first one.
Yep.
Yes.
Lakeland and and it's the Homesteads.
Homestead is the one that that we're losing the base every year at at the entrance of Highway 3.
You know, those, those are actually both on our list for this year or for '23.
Yeah, the and the Beard's Cove work, we also need to be carefully coordinating with utilities and thinking about pipe replacement on the the water line and what makes most sense there for timing. So we would, if we were doing AC water line replacement within Beard's Cove, we would want to make sure and couple that with our pavement restoration as well.
Mike, the the cross culverts, are those, those are non-funded and couldn't doesn't look like they would be funded through any of the state programs?
Yeah, that's like Little Shoe Fly is on the North Shore Road. And it's just not, you know, it's not got a large enough habitat area to to be funded. And I believe it's also the type of fish that are that are utilizing that creek. So and so it's it's hottie creek or hottie creek, same same scenario. Schoolhouse is on is on the North Shore too. So yeah, these other ones, Sunnyside is the, no, not Sunnyside, but the Beville Loop one, that was actually the Chehalis Fish Enhancement tried to get some funding for it, but it was like 98 out of 100. And so it's just, most of these just haven't got the funding.
And I love the idea of the new roads that I think Razor Road is probably one of the most important things in this county for the many different reasons, including law enforcement and fire and all their requests. But the thing on top of that is also they just lost money again, and the time is right for creating a road district and getting everybody on board, but all that takes time. That's not something that's going to happen overnight.
Yeah, we're, we're in contact with the property owner. We have an alignment going across the to extend Razor Road for about half mile. Not not any construction of it, but actually to obtain a right of way. And we made a proposal to them about the route, and they they said they were going to get back to us right here after the holidays.
Can you go back up to the top?
So I believe that the intent of of some of this information that's provided is to give the board a general understanding of what a million dollars is going to buy us, right? So the the 12,500 tons of HMA would equate to about eight miles of road if we decided to say, we're going to go buy the supplies. We're going to use this million dollars to go buy asphalt. If we decided to say, we're going to go buy the supplies, we're going to use this million dollars to go buy asphalt. And then place it in, we're going to be able to create eight miles of new roads. Um. Or you can actually pick and choose. Throughout these different options of where we would spend this money. And these projects tend to be projects. Uh, my understanding and, and Loretta and Mike can, can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, but these projects tend to be projects that don't get the funding. They don't, they aren't eligible for funding because maybe they're not a, um. Feeder, I think, street is what they talked about, you know, as the, the, the streets that actually feed one-on-one and some of our, our major, um. State roads, then, then we can get funding for some of those, but, but these tend to be the ones that are in the individual communities. Um, where we have a responsibility to maintain those roads and, and those things require county funds to do that work.
Yeah, you've got that absolutely correct, Mark.
Oh, we got a lot of projects that need a lot of money.
And, and a lot of these, and some of these projects, and I, I don't know specifically, I think we can clean up the list for you guys and. Um, would have to be doing that for tip cap anyway. Um, but the, the, um. Completely lost what I was going to say. I apologize.
It was brilliant though.
Oh gosh, it, it, it was gonna just make this decision so easy. But, but I, oh, oh, I was asking about preparedness also, uh, and are we prepared to actually do some? A lot of these projects actually have the engineering complete on them. So the engineering and design side of it is already done. We're just waiting for the money to come in to actually get the project completed.
Yeah. So I, 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 I think that is actually really helpful to know. I mean, I, you know, I think there's. Um, you know, there's always competition for these funds, right? And so the best way to ensure that this does become. Uh, not a one-time reduction in the transfer and that this is something that us and future commissions hold themselves to is. Is to see when this list is prioritized and tip cap weighs in and it comes back to us. And, you know, we have a plan for it for the next year that we deliver on those. That's the, that's the surest way to start planning long-term with this money is to actually see results with it. And so if you're saying that. The engineering is done and it's just there, you know, this is, uh, you know, it's, it's died on the vine for lack of funding and we can with this, you know, infuse some, some funding into it. Get things moving. Then, you know, that's a really compelling case, um, you know, to make. For us to make harder decisions on the general fund side and keep this money in road fund where we're seeing those, the, you know, the results of it. So I, I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah. Oh, I was just saying, yep, so do I.
Okay, Commissioners, so with that, are you comfortable with leaving the million eighty in the, in the road fund then?
I am.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I, I mean, obviously more to come on this, but you know, and I, you know, I'm, I'm fine with it. I just think, you know, we have to keep that in mind. We're making those FTE decisions.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mike and Loretta.
Thank you.
If the, if the board decides to, um, to, to bring this money back into roads, we can track it and, and specifically provide. The, the board with updates on progress that we're able to make, um, with this additional million dollars.
Keep it in mind, this is where it was supposed to be in the first place. So. Tracking it is one thing. We definitely need to do that during regular budget to make sure that, you know, we get the biggest thing for the bucks, but. If we give it back, it'd be a, it would be an action of the commission to take it back.
I was talking with Commissioner Shudy about this a little bit last week and just at that, you know, if the. General fund gets into a scenario where we feel like, um, we need additional funds. Uh, to, to maintain basic services, then this is an option that they can go back to. But at this point in time, I feel like you're in a position that this money should go back to the roads fund. So that we can start to do some of this long-term maintenance work, um, that has been put off because we don't have the local funds to do the work.
I want to add though, that's, that's only, that's not necessarily accurate. The reason why is if the city and the others bring them up to their max, we don't get this back. We can't get it back again. They'll, they get to use their taxing ability up to their max. We can't go over the top of that without. A minimum buying it back if they agree. So it's not as easy as just taking it back, uh, unlike the diversion which we control.
As I understood.
We're talking about the diversion. No, uh, the, uh.
Levy shift.
I'd like, say it again.
The levy shift.
I'd like the. Sorry.
So we're, we're just, just so we're all clear, right? We're discussing reducing the levy shift amount. From ten eighty to zero and keeping the diversion amount at the one million eighty, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes. And this levy shift that we've done for the last two years now. Uh, we used to do two point one-six million in diversion. And two years ago, we decided to split that number in half and do half levy shift and half diversion. So. In future years, we don't have to go back to doing a levy shift. We could, um, choose to do more diversion if the need. Becomes great.
Yeah. Several years back, they, they were at their cap. That's why I'm saying what I'm saying. Uh, so there, there was no ability to do it.
Yeah, and it was, it was, you know, the tracking requirements for the diversion are, are certainly different than, you know, what comes along with a levy shift. And so was a. Yeah. So I think. We're just trying to simplify things while keeping the general fund whole. Um, you know, but I think to Mark's point, you know, we're seeing. You know, we're seeing a decent, uh, general fund balance right now. And so this, this is a good time to reevaluate and. Put that money to work for his intended use, which is on roads.
Great.
Great. So we will leave that in for twenty twenty-three's budget in the road fund, the million eighty thousand. Thank you, Commissioners. Um, the last thing that I have is for, um, the Belter Sewer, the Department of Commerce grant. We received, um, a grant in the amount of five hundred thousand and, um, Loretta was going to. Um, Loretta and Richard were going to talk to Mark, I believe, about, um. Which year we were going to build the five hundred thousand to Department of Commerce and pay off some debt, um, with that. And if we don't have a decision today, we can always, um. Re-look at that next year. That is an option to do this early, early next year.
I believe we should be able to get this taken care of and build out this year by year end. Richard's been working with Lisa and our grant agencies at Department of Ecology and Commerce. Um, to nail down details, but that's what we're pressing ahead to do.
Wouldn't we be better off doing it sooner rather than later?
Absolutely.
Where monies are?
Yep.
Great. Thank you, Loretta.
You're welcome.
Okay, um. Then the last thing that I have for you Commissioners is just to go over the PLRs and then the, the FTE count. And actually, let's go over the FTE count first. Um, I'm going to share my screen. Okay. So here is our, our total FTE count for, um. For the proposed budget, we're at four hundred and four point oh-two or oh-one, I think on the budget, um, worksheet, it says, oh. Four oh-four point oh-one. So there's some, some rounding somewhere, some, somebody lost a point oh-one. Or gained, however you want to look at it.
Go back to the bottom again, please, so I can see that. Ninety-five. So nine.
Yeah. So we started off, um, in the twenty twenty-two adopted budget with three ninety-five point oh-two. And we have, um, ended up for the twenty twenty-three proposed budget at this point at four hundred and four point oh-two. So yeah, we have gained. Um, nine bodies. Um, we added, um, two point seven-five temporary positions. Um, in twenty-two and then, um, five point two-five permanent positions. And then we added one for, um, solid waste recently or the landfill. Um. So I just wanted to, um.
So with that, the, 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 if you can go back to the bottom again, sorry about that. I just need to get clarification for myself here. So the two point seven-five, uh, the proposals that we, that we added, uh, before the budget. Uh, being temporary positions, those were mostly all spoken for out of a specific budget line or grant, uh, correct?
That is my understanding, yes.
The, uh. The five point two-five, or let's do the one, the one we knew we already added that, and that's coming out of the special fund, uh, uh, for solid waste. Not the general fund. The, uh, five point two-five, explain that one one more time of what we've done.
So that one, we added, um, point two-five to WSU to make, um, their, uh. What is it? The coordinator position, uh, one, it was a point seven-five. Now it's a one FTE. In emergency management, we had split out, um, the manager position three ways. DEM parks and IT, and now it's only split two ways to DEM and parks. So that's a permanent, um. Addition in, um, in DEM and then in parks. And, um.
The one out of community development, that was also, uh, from specific funds in theirs, or is that, uh, general fund money?
That's, um, from the fire marshal, which I believe is, is general fund money.
Okay.
Um, and also in parks, we added, um, the one FTE, um, that was dedicated to REIT two. But now we, we have money budgeted in REIT two for when the Parks Department people work in REIT. But, um, we have this person budgeted out in, um, parks now.
Now that we've done that, we can still, maybe we need to get this clear with him. They should still bill to REIT if possible.
They do. That is correct. Um, we just, we have the money budgeted in REIT. And then they're supposed to be charging to REIT when they work on REIT projects.
We can get it back. Okay.
Um, in the Sheriff Department, we added, um, the Bell, Bell Fair Office, um, precinct, um. FTE for, for that position or for that, um, that FTE. And then we also, um, had a zero FTE impact eliminating, um. The Ryan Sperling's chief position when he becomes sheriff. And then, um, replacing Trevor Severance's sergeant position and, um, replacing those two with two patrol lieutenant positions.
Which was a smart move on his part. Uh, I want to say officially, I, I appreciate that. Uh, thinking outside the box and doing what he did there helps everybody. I, I very much appreciate that, uh, action.
On, um, Office of Public Defense, we added one FTE, um, on September thirteenth. And that FTE takes the place of, um, a contracted position. In Superior Court, we added an adminis, administrative secretary position. So there, there's the five point five eight.
So, so back on that contracted position, just to, I'm trying to keep the money straight for myself, we were paying a, a majority of that already. So even though we're calling it one full FTE, uh, out of the budget itself, we're yet three quarters, where were we at on that?
I believe it was about seventy-four, seventy-five thousand, um, on the operating side that we moved into the, um. The salary and benefit side and the offset, um, to make that employee. Uh, to make that a, an employed position, um, I believe was about forty-five thousand, somewhere in that range.
Okay.
Additional funds. And then, um, this is point three-three out of information technology is the, um, the difference of the manager position that was split three ways. DEM parks and IT, which is now just DEM and parks. So, um, that created a. Negative thirty-three in that fund, take removing that for a total of five point two-five FTEs. Added, um, before the budget process. We had a couple of, um, transfers within funds, um, that equal a zero. Um, that was. Facilities and grounds, we moved motor pool into facilities and grounds, um, which, thank you for, for approving that. That makes everything. It makes everybody's lives easier, I believe. Um, community development, um, and health, we had, we removed, uh. The director position, um, over DCD and health. And so now, um. That created a negative point five FTE in community development and a positive point five in, um, in health, Fund one fifty. And, um, county roads just had a, a movement of the financial analyst, um. Went from ER and R point one FTE from ER and R to roads. Um, they're supposed to analyze their time. And so they did that. And, um, figured they were spending a little bit more time in roads than in, um, than in ER and R. And, um, we have no, uh, temp positions added. During the budget process, um. Which may, I may need to reanalyze that because I think we had those, um, DCD positions for ARPA that I'm not including. Believe there's two. Um. So I'll go, I'll go back and analyze that and maybe update this list. And then we had the, the one that we already talked about in landfill to bring us to four oh-four point oh-two. So questions or comments on that before I go back to the PLRs and our open positions, open position requests.
We have a roll-up of about how much money that we're talking, although it, it won't matter because I have to still separate it out, uh, two point seven-five, probably another one out of the other. So three point seven-five. So I'd need a general roll-up of, uh. Maybe six positions, like give them all, what do you think, uh, to round it out at one point two?
You mean from, going from three ninety-five to four oh-four?
Yeah, the two of us are out of, uh, different grant funds or money in, money out. We got probably one that out of the other ones that. Is not, uh. It's not a full actual position. It's half position for, for other, I'm looking at the bow wave of what's happening. That's what I'm doing here. So with that, I'm looking at a bow wave of, I'm thinking about. Seven hundred thousand, right?
Probably at, at least that, I would say, um.
You know, if we're taking out the, the temps in the, the partial bow wave increase of seven hundred.
Yeah. And if, if we go back to, um. I'm going to stop this share for a moment and go back.
But not all general fund, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Didn't two of them come from, um, ARPA monies and then also, um, public health monies? And then those two, I think, became permanent positions through grants out of health, right?
Yeah. And solid waste pays for solid waste. Correct.
Right.
Yep. So out of the general fund, uh, what do you think that bow wave is? And if we take that out, cause you're right, take that, so we're probably looking at. Five and a half?
Yeah. I mean, if you look at, this is the difference between, um, between last year's adopted budget. And this year where we're at with our maintenance budget. So we have an additional one point six seven four million in salaries and benefits. And of course, not all of that is related to new positions. I would guess probably half of that is related to new positions. And then, um, the other half is going to be, you know, contract changes. And, um, we added in, uh, longevity, which we didn't have before to non-union, um. Step increases and, um, different contracts being adopted. So, um. So you can kind of get an idea of where, where we're at from this.
Well, then a percentage of that is going to be out of the other funds and a percentage of that even more is going to be from a transfer in, uh, transfer out of monies through grants, as was mentioned by Chris Trask.
Yeah. And we also have, you can do the same thing, looking at, um, looking at the. The other spreadsheet. The other spreadsheet on the special and other funds comparing the salary and benefits. It looks about eight hundred and three thousand. Over last year's budget in the special funds and then a total of two point four seven, seven, eight. Million in all funds. Over last year. So does that help to answer?
A little bit, yeah. For the most part, I'm just trying to think for that bow wave of this year that's unaccounted for, that we're not looking at right now. I'm looking at close to six hundred thousand in that will be on next year's. Regardless, you know, of grants and stuff like that. The rest I can do with grants and, and through public works dollars out of the general fund. So I gotta keep track of a little over half a million. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so going back to the open PLRs. So we have an FTE request in the auditor's office for a public records position. The approximate. Budget impact would be seventy-four thousand, thirty-five dollars. We have the HR analyst, ninety-one thousand, three dollars. We have in support, or I'm sorry, district court, a deputy administrator, approximate cost one hundred and fifteen thousand, nine fifteen. In the coroner's office, we have a deputy coroner position ask of seventy-four thousand, four seventy-six.
We didn't already add, move that?
We moved the extra help, but we decided to not move any of the FTEs that were affecting the general fund until the very end. So we, yeah, the extra help and in talking to the coroner, she had said. That if she gets the new position, she would not need the extra help of eight thousand. So we could offset that by, if we choose to move that position in. In the sheriff's office, we have four deputy positions at ninety-seven thousand, six ninety-eight each. And then we have a car for each of those positions at forty-eight point five thousand. And those are. All of our outstanding PLR requests besides in the sheriff's office, they have the overtime, the contract for the animal shelter program. The BHO contract and. Trackables, I believe thirty thousand is what we didn't move into, into the budget and then. The night vision. Of two hundred thirty-five thousand, eight sixty-nine, but I believe all of that is not a top priority to them at this time. It's just the FTEs. So, so those are outstanding. Ask for, for positions.
Let me go back up to the top one more time and just let me look at it one more time. So coming down, you have public records. That is. Now, when we're talking seventy-five K and we're talking the ninety-one, are those fully loaded?
These are fully loaded numbers, yes.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
You're welcome. So commissioners. If we want to just go down and, and go one by one and, and talk about each, do you want to do that?
Sure.
So beginning with the auditor's office, their request for the public records position.
I see now.
I would say no, not at this time.
Agreed.
Okay, the, the HR analyst.
Um, yes.
And what would that person do?
That would be a question for Mark or Mary.
I'm here. So the intent behind that position would be to take all of the HR functions that are currently on the risk and safety compliance manager. To free us up to engage in risk more highly. It'll also help create capacity around. What labor negotiations we can do, the extent to which we can be involved more fully in recruitment and retention. And I do believe that we're in a very reactive position when it comes to resource management at this point and we could be in a more proactive position and, and be doing a better job. And this, this position would help alleviate a lot of that pressure and create more capacity.
Gotcha. Thank you. I'll support that.
I'll support it, but I, I think it's not ripe yet. I think they ought to be talking about having a deputy director over there as well. And just my personal belief and I think it's something that we should actually be picking up in the. In sometime in the middle of the year as everything is put into place first, but I will support it and not stand in its way if the other two commissioners are moving forward with.
Okay, on, thank you, Mary. On the district court, we have the deputy administrator.
I'd like to hold on.
Same.
Same, but I do think that it is a necessary thing when the time comes and we hear a retirement date. That we also have succession training at some point there.
Agreed.
Okay, in the coroner's office, the deputy coroner position.
Absolutely supportive.
I, I see that was critical.
Same.
And then the last one is the sheriff deputies positions for. Or up to four.
I see that as, as critical as, as fast as we're growing and. The water dividing, you know, we've got so many obstacles. I would support it. But I'd also like to hear from the other commissioners.
What was that commissioner?
Yeah.
But I'd also like to hear from you guys.
Oh. So I, I would be supportive of, of less than four FTEs, one or two. There's a lot of costs that comes with each and, and I think we have some outstanding liabilities to fund over there in terms of. Jail healthcare costs. Certainly want to look at the animal control program. That was, that was recommended. And then I also think, you know, I'd like to be able to, to have some money that we could use for a potential outsourcing partnership. So that the deputies that we do have can arrest people and, and see how that helps as well. So. I would be, I would be willing to support up to two. New sheriff's deputies.
And I myself, looking at the bow wave and, and everything, if we do too, we're looking at two hundred thousand bow wave yearly and a one hundred thousand dollar one-time investment. So it's not as great issues we're looking at, but it is definitely gives, it takes time to fill these positions anyway. And we can always look at it again in the middle of the years we go forward, but I'm supportive right now fully of two with the vehicles to go with it, be placed into the budget.
I could go for the two.
Okay, great. So we have. A no on the auditor's position, yes on human resources, no on district court, yes on coroner, and I just wanted to verify or. Verify the eight thousand that we will remove that out of. Of the budget, of the maintenance level budget for the extra help. And move the coroner position in. And then two deputy sheriff positions with vehicles.
All right, so I came up with one sixty-five without. The sheriff's office, but what does that bring us to?
So it should be a little less than the one sixty-five because of the ninety-one and, and taking away the eight out of the seventy-four, to be honest, but close enough and then the two hundred.
Is that ninety-one at the, at the top range or the, at the bottom range?
Ninety-one.
Or the HR analyst?
I, I can look in just a moment. I'm coming up with four hundred forty-nine thousand, eight seventy-five. For the cost of adding the FTEs and removing the eight thousand for the coroner's extra help.
What happened there?
Oh, I'm looking at the, where that HR analyst position where we budgeted.
How many unfilled positions do we have?
I would have to look at that.
In which department, Commissioner?
It looks like we might have maybe seven in public works. And then I know we have what? Only eighteen out of twenty-five of our jail staff. Those are the only ones that I really know of.
So the HR analyst is that ninety-one thousand, three dollars is step five. So mid, mid step is where we put that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Can you see the two thousand and twenty-three proposed budget still?
Yes.
Okay, so, so with those changes, right now we're utilizing four million, fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars out of the. Out of the cash reserved.
I'm still missing something. I'm coming up with three hundred and fifty, three hundred fifty-five and you're saying four hundred and something. Are you counting the additional for the cars?
Yes.
Okay. That, that, then it makes sense because she was saying for staff. So I was a little confused there.
So with those changes, I'm showing that the total that we would use out of the. The cash for two thousand and twenty-three for the general fund, fund would be four million, five hundred, seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. And of course, that is before we make the property tax revenue change. So that will change just slightly. And be just a little bit lower, so a little less than four point five million. So if everybody is comfortable with that, I will ask IT to publish the proposed budget on the website with these changes.
And just for the commissioner to see where I was talking, so we have a bow wave. That we have added out of the general fund itself. With what we've done the middle of the year and what we've done, what we're doing right now of a minimum of nine hundred and ten thousand. That we've created over last year's budget. That's a minimum because some of these other ones are, if they become non-grant funded or whatever, it'll change that. So basically a million dollars in extra staffing.
Yep.
Christian, another one, I, I'd just like to point out that, that the revenue side of our general fund budget also has some increases in it that. Where, where money came in above what we expected. So I think we are, we continually do a fairly conservative job of forecasting revenues. And, and, and. I support that a hundred percent, right? I don't want to say that let's, let's plan for something that we're not going to receive because that, that's scary when you do it that way, but. But I do see some pretty significant increases in, and I don't, I don't want to steal Jen's thunder here, but. In the revenues associated with the county assistance that comes from the state or sales tax revenue.
And I, and, and I understand all that. I'm just, so the other commissioners keep the same information that I have. I'm just sharing with them. The bow wave on employees that has been created, how we pay for them is another thing that we have to keep in mind and remember amongst each other. But how much we're increasing it when somebody comes to us for the next one, we have to remember since the last year's budget, we have that increase in the general fund direct. That's not being paid for specifically cash in, cash out.
Yep, I had that already in my.
Yeah.
Tiny little brain.
Yeah, definitely not saying not to. I'm just trying to keep us all on the same page.
And then just real quick, are, are we? Do we have a discussion about the other PLRs on the sheriff's side or do we want to? I can, I can say just on the, on the BHO side, I think they're working on an MOU with our current provider that. Would alleviate that. Funding request.
Interesting.
So keep the current funding in place. Which is state funded.
Okay, so, so that's no longer a need than the eighty thousand. So we will. Not consider that then.
And then I would be open to a conversation about the firearms replacements, given that those are every five to seven years.
So those we actually already approved.
Yeah, we already approved that, so.
Sorry, I didn't update my, my note very well in here. So what, what was, I mean, the amounts are. Over here, the approved amounts are the, the sidearms and then thirty-five thousand of the, the sidearms and rifles. And then the thirty-five thousand of trackables out of the sixty-five, so.
And we did not do the, the night vision, but we have covered the Bearcat and we're working on covering. Did we include any of it in this budget for the underwater?
We did not.
Now, Mark, we were talking about that and stuff and the benefit that comes with it. We have part of it through a grant. I'm sure that fifteen thousand, is that already included or is this something we want to do in a supplemental?
I think that it's probably going to have to go through a supplemental. I share your interest in underwater side of things, just from an emergency management perspective. Attending some of those meetings. I, I'd like to, to work with the sheriff's office a little bit more, the sheriff's office administration a little bit more on. The, the priority side of that, right? So definitely want to support what their needs are. I have my own personal feelings about the fact that our, our deputies have to respond when an individual is, is reported as drowned. And many of our waterways are fairly dangerous, waterways to go into and, and so having the ability to. Have a, an underwater camera that allows us to start the search and potentially. You know. Capture the, the potential victim. To, to me, I, I just feel like it's, it's something I'd love to see us do and, and we don't need the staff. So if you remember, the commission approved. Commercial divers on a, on a. Volunteer basis. I think we got two volunteers to come in and, and actually get physicals done. But you need more than two in order to respond to one of these incidences.
I think the question I have is more, do we need to have it included right now in this budget or is the, the amount remaining outside of the grant? Because we already agreed to go for the grant. So I'm assuming we agreed we're moving forward with this project. The question is, where is it going to come out of? Will it come out of ARPA funds? Will it come out of the budget? If it's in, if it's coming out of the budget, we need to include it in the budget or is it something we're saying we need to include during supplemental or for supplemental? But we told to go after the grant, so I assume we're in, right?
Yeah, what we, what we did is we dedicated or identified fifteen thousand dollars and some change to go towards this grant. If, if, if in the end we didn't do it. Then that would, then we could reallocate that fifteen thousand to go somewhere else. Um, then that would, then we could reallocate that fifteen thousand to go somewhere else. Um, so I, I just. I'm a little hesitant to talk for the sheriff's office, and I looked, I looked through the, the list of attendees here, and I don't see an individual from the sheriff's office here, but, um, I, I. And I'm like, support it.
Yeah, and I don't, I would say I don't think they need to, uh, commissioners, the question that we have is, uh, uh. Do we want to do it and put it in the budget right now and just add it in? Do we want to do it, uh, consider it through supplemental? Uh, because we already sent them out to go after the grant. I have no problem with adding that amount into the budget itself, so it's there.
I, I would say that you'd have to add, and I'm guessing here a little bit, about seventy-five thousand. Think the total cost of everything with the camera and everything else, um, and the, and the actual, some add-ons that you can do to, to help us, to help us. Like grab things and bring them back to the surface. Um, I think it was right around. Eighty, the, the high side of eighty.
Well, that's what I thought, I would get fifteen.
Well, we already have fifteen towards it, so I'm thinking if it's ninety minus fifteen, I'm thinking around seventy-five thousand.
And that's where I was.
Okay.
So I would, I would probably just add it now and have one less thing to worry about chasing a supplemental one.
Yeah, I'd agree. I'd also like to continue the conversation about the, the animal shelter program.
Well, you know, again, it's always need to talk about even where it's supposed to go. How it should.
Yeah, I think we had, I, I think we had some questions back to, to both Mark and, and the sheriff's office about. Where that would live or could live, and, and so I think, I think it's, we'd need to revisit it, and. That's one of those things that, that I think could be done through a supplemental, um, you know, as we go through that whole contract process and. Um, so yeah, I agree. I think let's, let's keep that on the docket heading into twenty-twenty-three.
Animal control is needed, it's just how, how to get there, that's the question.
So a thought on the, um, on the underwater, um, video or underwater camera is that, um, we have a little bit of ARPA funding available. And we could use the difference in whatever we, we receive from the other grant and just pay for that, um, out of that. ARPA funding, and that ARPA funding is already. Budgeted in general, and so we wouldn't need to do, um, a supplemental appropriation next year. We could just, um. Use that money to pay for that. Out of our, our funds.
Personally, I like the idea of using ARPA funds for this, uh, but I'm comfortable either way, as long as we're doing it. And we're, we're at least tying up this loose end, because I do think it's a loose end. We already gone after grant, uh, we definitely want it, it's just how to do it.
I'd love for it to come out of ARPA, that would be great.
And I forget exactly how much there is, uh, available at this time. I believe it's in the range of fifty to sixty thousand, but there. There is most likely going to be. Funding left over from. Other approved projects, and so, um, I mean, we could always make up the difference out of. General fund, um. But that's something we can. Uh, we can do without having to amend, um. The budget, uh, right now.
Either way, I'd love for us to make the decision, like Commissioner Shutey said, uh, the last thing I think we want to do is have it online for our next supplemental. I'd rather, you know, either go ARPA or put it in the budget. Today.
Well, if there are funds available in the ARPA, I think that's where I would. Place it first.
Okay.
Well, that's fine with me. I mean, I, does that, Jennifer, is that taking into account our upcoming community lifeline conversation?
Uh, no, it is not.
Okay, so if we just put it in the regular budget, would that preclude us from using ARPA?
No, it wouldn't. I can put it in the regular budget.
There you go.
Okay, and so, um. The night, it's a ninety thousand dollar cost with fifteen thousand coming in as, as grant revenue, is that correct, Mark?
So I'm thinking, Diane, do you have different numbers in your head?
No, that's what I'm thinking too. I think. That's the highest number I've heard, so that should be good.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll put in ninety thousand, um, on the expense side, and I'll leave the revenue for now unless, um. Unless you want me to put that in, but, um, I, I would prefer to. Um, not put in the revenue, since I don't know where that's going to fit in under a revenue line.
So just so you know, Mark, the number I have in front of me that was presented by the Mays County Sheriff's Office for the ARPA funding was seventy-three thousand one hundred thirty.
Okay. I, I, yeah, I just feel like I, I feel like I heard a number in the eighties, Commissioner, I, I've got, I can, I can get the exact number and. And, and work with Jen, but from a budgetary perspective, um. I, I guess it leaves a little bit of wiggle room there.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm good with the higher number, and that, that keeps us safe, and. Um, if it comes in lower, great.
Same.
Okay, and just to be clear, we're putting that into the sheriff's office budget?
Yeah, that's one thing, no matter what we do, we're putting it into that budget, so we, we put it in there, we gotta. Yeah, we spent it.
Yep.
And then the, Jen, the revenue we're talking about is the EMPG grant that will show up on the emergency management side, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and is that, is it already in the twenty-twenty-three budget?
I'm thinking it's anticipated, because it's one we get every year, but we'll have to make sure.
Okay, so for now, we'll leave it, because it, the expense side is what really.
Right.
Matters for this expenditure, um, so that will bring us to, um, four million five hundred ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-two. In, um, the number that we're utilizing from our cash in twenty-twenty-three, so, um. So that will be updated when, um. When we go to post this budget on the website today. So is there anything else that we want to talk about? Um, do we want to go through any, any of the other PLRs, uh, for the sheriff's office, or are we? Are we done?
Good.
I think I'm all set. If you're, if you're good, I'm good.
I think we spent enough for today.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Thank you very much, commissioners. And this will be posted on the website, um, later on today, along with the detail by account. And so we're ready to go for adoption on December fifth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, would you mind a brief? Break?
Nope.
Sounds good.
Okay, uh, let's be back, uh, in, uh, five minutes. Okay, welcome back, everybody. Um, we're going to move into support services, and I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you, Commissioner Shutey. Uh, first up is TJ talking about fiber optic line upgrades. So this is, yeah, this is the project that we talked about funding through ARPA. I believe there's some money in the budget to do that. Um, where we're going to upgrade our fiber lines into the county. So TJ, go for it.
Morning, um, so we're just looking to get approval to move forward with the bid process, get this opened up, um, and see what we get back. Um, I know you all had a chance for views during the opera process, so I'm sure if you have any further questions on it this time.
Great, supportive, appreciate you.
supportive.
I think it's great.
Good. Um, so the other item I have for you is, uh, regarding. A meeting we have with a company called Spyglass, uh, both Leo and Mark and I. Um, met with them. They're a company that will go through and audit our cellular and, uh, landline phone bills to see if we're. Spending unnecessary funds, um. So the way they do their business is there's no cost upfront. We provide them with all of our bills and they go through it. Um, if they recover any money that we've been charged in the past, they take fifty percent of whatever, uh, we get back. And then if there's any ongoing savings, they take a year's worth of those savings. So basically, our first year, we're paying the exact same, and then after that, we recoup those savings. I think Leo was. On board with it, correct, Leo? Um, and it went through IT strength committee and, uh, got approval from that as well. So we would like to, to move forward with, uh, that contract.
Good.
Yeah.
They're here.
Okay, that's all I got for you.
Thanks, TJ.
Thank you.
I believe it's, it's my turn now to talk about budget again.
Yeah, welcome back.
Thanks. Um, so this time we're talking about the twenty-twenty-two amendments to the budget, and I'll share my screen so you can see, um, the budget, the proposed budget amendments. So, um, we have a total, um, request of. One million five hundred eighteen thousand two hundred sixty-four dollars out of the general fund budget. And of that, um, seven hundred and twenty thousand nine twenty-eight is proposed as coming in as revenue to offset that one point five one eight million. In the other funds, we have, um, requests of two million seven hundred seventy-nine thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars. And of that, two million three hundred seventy thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, it's, is offset by incoming revenue. So, um, these are the, the proposed amendments, and, um, the, the ones that we're asking for, um. That were added since last week are, uh, twenty, twenty thousand dollars, or no, I'm sorry, that one was already in there. We have, uh, this one, twenty thousand dollars, um, increase in fuel costs. And, um, janitorial supplies for facilities and grounds. Um, we have, uh, ten thousand dollars for the commissioner's budget for, um. For benefits that were not previously budgeted. Um, thirty-eight thousand for support services, um. For, to account for the succession planning when we had, um. Frank still on at the beginning of the year. And then we have, um. Thirty-four thousand one hundred in parks and trails, and, um, some of that was briefed last week. The, the gooseneck trailer fifteen thousand one hundred was already in, in last week's request. We have an additional, um, nineteen thousand dollars worth of requests in fuel, um. Santa Cam rental and increased cost of their dump truck. Um, we've got. Three thousand dollars in, in fuel costs for the coroner's office that wasn't in last week's request. In the sheriff's office, we have, um, outfits that were completed in twenty-twenty-two, but were budgeted for in twenty-twenty-one of a hundred and forty thousand eight thirteen. And then increased fuel costs of seventy thousand. In Superior Court, we have, um, seventy-five hundred for the miscellaneous court commissioner increase, which was approved at a recent, um. Commissioner's meeting, I believe. And then we have in the non-departmental fund, um, or department, we have. Uh, two hundred and fifty-one thousand to, uh, increase over last week's request for, um, property insurance. We had a, a huge increase over last year, what was budgeted. Um, of close to two hundred and fifty thousand, and then we have, um, video recorded meetings, increase of two thousand. And then in, um. Community services, community support services fund, we have, um. A Hen Grant Award of one point three million. And in the landfill, we have the approved position, um. Which. I plugged in twelve thousand dollars in case that position gets filled this year. And. Believe that's, that's all that we added over last week. So any questions or comments on any of these requests?
Not for me.
Nope.
Looks good.
Okay. Um, the next thing that I have is the October financials. And I'll share my screen. For that as well. So beginning on page two, we have, um, in the general fund revenue, we have received. Thirty-nine million five hundred seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars in twenty-twenty-two through October. Compared to last year, thirty-eight million three thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, we're at ninety-seven percent of our budgeted revenue, revenue in the general fund this year compared to ninety-six percent last year. In the treasures revenue detail, we have. Um, received twenty-eight million three hundred twenty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And last year, we had received, um, twenty-six million two hundred and eighty thousand five hundred and ten dollars, and there, there's some formula error happening here, so I'll figure out what's, what's wrong there. Um, but we have received more, um. More revenue this year than what we had actually budgeted for, for the entire year, so through October, so we're at a hundred and five percent of our. Budgeted revenue compared to last year, we were at a hundred percent in, um, in October. And on the expenditure side for current expense. We have received, or we have expended thirty-five million ninety-five thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars compared to last year, thirty-two million four hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars. Were at eighty percent of our budgeted expenditures through October compared to last year, seventy-nine percent.
Jennifer, how are we at one fourteen percent on traffic policing?
Um, on the traffic policing. Because we, um, we. Plugged in the budget as one million eighty thousand. Last year, this wasn't updated. That needed to be updated to be a million eighty, and it wasn't done, so sorry about that error. Um, so. A million eighty is what we, um. What we have is coming in as revenue, so we've expended one point two two seven, so that's how we're at a hundred and fourteen percent. And it looks funny compared to last year, because normally I make that change on here before this is presented. So, um, this is what we actually have budgeted in expenditures in twenty-twenty-one for traffic policing, and it's around the same for, um, for twenty. Twenty-two, but we changed that number to a million eighty to show the actual diversion coming in, so we're expending a lot more. And we're planning on expending a lot more in the traffic policing than, um, than what we're actually, um, receiving in that. You know, million eighty.
So my, my question is then, does that come directly out of the sheriff's budget out of their eighty-four percent?
Yeah, this is a combined, um, number here, so, um.
Where's the combined number?
I mean, if you combine these two, that's the total sheriff department budget, yeah, or sheriff's office budget.
So, so whatever they go over will come out of the other line.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, and I. I don't really like that we change this number, because it's not what's true in munis, and. Um, I mean, if it helps everybody to understand it better, that's fine. We can change it to, or keep it changed.
Well, yeah, we need to know the exact numbers that we're putting out, money revenue in, revenue out. So you can change that number, but if we're only putting that much into that line item, we need to know that.
The revenue comes in to the, the treasures, um, detailed revenue, so that million eighty comes in, um.
Yeah.
Under the. Road diversion. So right now, we've received nine hundred and eighty-one thousand. We've budgeted a million eighty. So that's where the revenue comes in, but the expense side, um. We actually budget to expend somewhere around. Two point six million. But. A while back, you would ask me to change this to a million eighty on the expense side, so that we.
Well, that has to be budgeted within their budget, because they have bottom line authority. We have that line just to keep track for crab and everything else. And if we're only taking that much money out, that's what, how much money has to be accounted for, to make sure that we use that money the way crab and, and them expect. Other than that, it should be, oh, anything above that amount. Should not be in a separate line item. It should be in the sheriff's budget like you would for the jail or anything else.
I mean, this is the expenditure. Side, and so they have expended one point two two seven, so they have fully expended the million eighty. We have not received the full diversion. Yet, I expect that that will come in, in, in November, and we will have received that full million eighty, but, um, yes, as long as these are actual. Um, eligible traffic policing expenditures, then they have expended their. then they have expended their full one million eighty through October of this year. Does that help?
No, and and I understand that the question is where would the remainder of it come from?
Out of the sheriff's total budget. So their total budget is fifteen million forty seven thousand two hundred and nine dollars.
So what it does is it changes those those two numbers. It makes them not accurate. That's the the issue I have, but we'll deal with that later. Go ahead. I just need to make sure I know where it's coming from, where it's coming out of. Because, you know, if we're budgeting that much for traffic policing to be spent out of those other funds, that's one thing. But if we're just creating a whole nother line that they have bottom line authority to spend up to, then we've exceeded that.
There the total that they have budgeted bottom line authority is fifteen million forty seven thousand two oh nine. And the total that they have expended through October is thirteen million twenty three thousand three hundred seventy seven dollars. So you just have to add the two together. I mean, I I don't know, I feel like maybe this is causing too much confusion to have it separated out on here. Because it makes it look like it's its own department, but it's a a program within that department. So I mean, if it would be helpful, I can I can not show the traffic policing and have the sheriff's department or sheriff's office come and brief on that on their own. I I don't know.
And that's what that's what they had done historically is they were supposed to just come and show us they were where they needed to be. Because several years back, they did not utilize the money. They had to give money back.
Yeah, which is why we cut it down to the million eighty instead of the two point one six million. Why we levy shifted half instead of doing the full two point one six million diversion. So yeah, we can, we can look at other options or we can, I can keep this at at the actual amount that we budget, which is around the two point six. And which would, of course, reduce this number here then. The thirteen million nine sixty seven. Or I can combine them. So commissioners, if you have any preference on this, I can change it for next time.
Again, for me, if we're gonna put them together, if we're gonna keep them separated, then in that line item, they only go up to whatever it's budgeted till and the rest goes directly under the regular budget. Just to guarantee and make sure that anything that we take out, that they've spent up to that amount, so we don't have to give it back. That's the reason why that line would even exist in in our vocabulary.
Okay, so do commissioners Trask and and Shudy, do you have a preference on how this is shown?
I really don't. I mean, I I've always been able to kind of follow it this way. But I mean, if there's a way that Jen, if you think that there's a way that's clearer or simpler, I'm I'm open to that. But I I haven't really had any issues with this, I guess, up until now.
Yeah, I've I've not had any any issues with this. It always seemed, I don't know, I guess, I guess it was clear to me.
Okay. So I don't know. Do we? So Commissioner Netherland, then your preference would be to combine it. Is that right? Combine the sheriffs and not show the traffic policing in this report?
Yes, or or limit it to a hundred percent and the rest goes directly out of their budget. We should never have a line that is over a hundred percent without us having full disclosure and conversations for ourselves and the public who looked at this thing.
Okay, I'll just combine it for for next month and and thereafter. And then we can see if that's working and go from there. Thank you. Okay, so we have the special revenue streams comparison. We have community development revenue is down compared to last year. The detention and correction services, which is fairly minimal, is a little bit down. The property taxes are a little higher than than last year at this time. Road diversion a little bit lower. County road property taxes are slightly higher. The sales tax is is much higher than last ti- last year at this time. Criminal justice taxes and entitlements are slightly lower than last year. The rural sales and use tax fund is a little bit higher, nine hundred and twelve thousand compared to eight fifty eight forty nine last year. Homelessness prevention filings are down six hundred and six thousand compared to eight thirty three last year. Lodging taxes up eight hundred and forty five thousand compared to seven hundred and thirty last year. Reit is a little bit down from last year, one point six five eight that million, I'm sorry, one point six five eight million compared to last year, one point seven nine nine million. The county sales tax. We received eight hundred seventy four thousand six hundred forty dollars in October, which would have been for August. And that is a record amount of sales tax for for us at any one given month. And we're projected to receive over nine million dollars in sales tax through the end of the year. So we're looking great there.
Jennifer, what do we project for our wheat next year?
For our wheat?
Our budget? Because I do think this is the beginning of a downturn.
We projected one point eight million in each fund, re one and re two.
Yeah. That's two months off. Okay.
On the sixth year, the financial recap. So at the end of October, we have twenty seven million five hundred ninety one thousand one hundred thirty dollars in cash. And you can see how all of that is is reserved here. And then our unreserved cash is ten million ninety eight thousand five ninety. And then we have a recap of the the budget received for the general fund. We're at ninety seven percent of our budgeted revenue, again, compared to eighty percent of our expenditures. And then on the special and other fund cash balances through the end of October, or at the end of October, we were at fifty seven million two hundred forty eight thousand sixty dollars. And that includes ten and a half million in the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, which we had, we did have five million of that last year. But but that is an increase over over the previous five years by by quite a bit. Even if you remove that, the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So moving on to the motor pool summary, we are, we have expended one point four two two million through the end of October. And our budget is one point five oh five. So we're at ninety, close to ninety five percent of our budget. And so we're adding some funds into the the amendments. And so we should be okay there through the end of the year. If you if you go up, you can see by by a department here. On the special funds, the revenue, we have received fifty two million nine hundred sixty seven thousand twelve dollars compared to last year, fifty one million sixty thousand nine hundred fifty four dollars. This report is removing the beginning fund balances. But we budgeted for eighty million eight hundred ninety nine thousand in revenue compared to last year. We budgeted for fifty seven million one hundred eighty two thousand in revenue. So we're we're only at sixty five percent of our budgeted revenue for this year compared to eighty nine percent last year. But but our budget is much, much higher for twenty two. And there's a couple of different funds that account for that, like the Skoak Flood Zone and then Belfair. Wastewater. Those are the two that jump out at me as being a lot higher than the previous year. And on the expense side, we've expended thirty seven million three hundred eighty thousand three hundred sixty eight dollars compared to last year. Thirty eight million one hundred nine thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars. We're at forty three percent of our budgeted expenditures this year compared to fifty six percent last year. And again, the expenditures are budgeted at a much higher rate than than the expenditures last year. So any questions or comments? Sorry, I was trying to hurry through this because I know we took a long time on our our budget workshop this morning for twenty three.
No questions. That looks good.
I'm good.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen.
Welcome. I'll stop my share now.
Next thing, I'm Becky coming to talk to us a little bit about a civil service vacancy. Go ahead, Becky.
So I am talking, yes, about the civil service commission today. There is one civil service commission term that is ending this year on December thirty one. And the current member is interested in seeking reappointment. So the term for the civil service commission is six years and this position's new term will end on December thirty one of twenty twenty eight. I have a news release that I prepared seeking applicants. And I'm requesting that this item be placed on the commissioner's agenda for tomorrow, November twenty second.
With me.
Sounds good to me.
Thanks, Becky.
So this next one is mine. I'm bringing it before you. You might remember it. Pirate District eleven charges us for services provided to our new public works facility out along Highway one oh one. The amount is sixty four hundred dollars annually. This amount is not increasing at all. And talking with chief, he was hoping that we could turn this into a two year contract as opposed to a one year contract.
I'm comfortable with it.
I'm fine with that.
Yep, same here.
Great, thank you. I will move that forward. So the next item that you don't have materials on, but it's a topic that we've just discussed before, is our community lifeline. And community lifeline came to us a while ago and and asked for some funds to help open their shelter up for the the cold months. So this would be originally, it was November through November through May, I believe, yeah, of twenty twenty three. And so Melissa Casey over in our public health department has worked really closely with the community lifeline administration to kind of define what do you really need in order to to stay open twenty four seven and fill the fill the facility up with the thirty five heads in the facility. And they've came out with the the request is for seventy seven thousand one hundred and fifty four dollars. The first time that we brought this before the board, they asked that we go and talk with the city. I did talk with the city manager Jeff Knighton to discuss with him options the city has. They came back that they have about fifty four thousand dollars that's remaining in their ARPA funds that they would be willing to dedicate twenty thousand towards this. And the remain, they could, they could do more. But if they did more, then they may be coming back to the county to ask for funds for their mitigation site for the homeless campers. So they're working on that. They think it's going to be on C Street, but the city council has not formally approved that. So they have earmarked the remainder of those ARPA funds to go towards that mitigation site for the homeless campers. So I'm bringing this back before the board to see if we'd like to move forward on it. The request originally was for seventy seven thousand one fifty four. I could have Melissa work with community lifeline to to revise that for maybe take a month off. Looking for direction from the board.
Personally, I'm only interested, but I'm just one wisher. I'm only interested in meeting what the the city is willing to do. It's in, it's in their area. If they're willing to step up for twenty, I'm willing to step up for twenty. As for other things, I don't know what to say. It's it's their barbecue. If they decide they're going to have a spe- a special area dedicated for special things, then that's up to them in their city council. It's not up to us. I also believe that it's time to have some type of provision with in order to protect those that are there and that are using it to have a provision in place where people that do not meet the expectations become violent or whatever are eighty sixth for a specific amount of time, an actual written policy. And with that, the ability to present them the options to go through Kitsap County for services or Thurston County for services and how to take the bus to get there and how we can help them to get there. So they're not left completely without services. But so it's a safety net, but I think the the two go hand in hand. That's just my two cents, but it's up to the other commissioners. It is Commissioner Trask's district more than it is mine. I'm just giving my opinion.
One of the, one of the proposals that we were entertaining Commissioner Netherland was to utilize some of our remaining ARPA funds for this. So it wouldn't be general fund money. It would actually be ARPA funds.
It'd still be at the same. I have no problem matching the city.
Yeah, so the city is going to have a a decision making meeting, I guess, tomorrow night. And so I would encourage everyone to to go to that so that they can have an idea about the direction that the city is is headed. You'll also be able to hear concerns from citizens. And this is kind of the the culmination of the of the homeless task force. And I also have some some reservations about this, but I also understand the need, especially during these cold, wet times. I believe that Dave walked through, David Wyndham walked through the community lifeline with the city also so that they they could determine what their real needs were. Mark, can you tell me, this new plan does not include raises or anything like that, right?
That is correct. Yeah, Melissa and Melissa's actually on. She could talk about it in detail, but if you had any more detailed questions, but Melissa really did just determine the cost of adding two additional people that could cover the the evenings for the twenty four seven. And I believe that's where the majority came from. So there was no COLA increases or anything for the existing staff that were there.
Okay, and these two additional folks, are they, they are qualified to to work there?
Yeah.
I'm I'm assuming that that's that's going to be a
Shelter. I think that they're, yeah, I think that their specific title is shelter aid.
That's kind of vague. Want to make sure that that if we're making an investment in this, that it's going to help community diet, like community lifeline, help those that are there on the streets right now, but also not to encourage more. How do I want to say this? I want to provide the help that people need, a hand up, not a handout. And so I want to make sure that 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 it's not my personal money. I mean, I've got a small portion of portion of it, but this is, this is our resident. This is our our taxpayers' money. And so I want to make sure that if we're investing in this, it's a good investment and we'll see the ROI is going to be visible, plain for people to see. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me. Dave or Melissa, do you have anything to add to this conversation regarding community lifeline?
I can add a little bit. I I have had some direct conversation with their board chair and really insisted that they understand this is definitely only an emergency, an emergency request to help them just to get people off the street during these really cold winter months. And that going forward, it is the expectation that they really make efforts to budget wisely and spend their money according to make efforts to budget wisely and spend their money according to their contracts. It seems like they have a lot of additional grants coming from the healthcare authority to help them sustain their shelter going forward. So I'm I'm hopeful that with some of the advice that's been given and a lot of extra work that our team has done with them, that they have the tools, they just need to execute.
Right, I know that you guys have, you guys have spent countless hours with them and I I like to see the relationship between the county and Community Lifeline. It's been pretty difficult in the past. And so making sure that those doors are open and that we're available for help, maybe not financial, but help, you know, assistance in other ways would be good. I know that they've got the Recovery Cafe coming also, and that's a good resource for for our people, are the people that need help. So I I think I would be willing to to help them out minus a month since November is no longer part of that. But that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I'll weigh in as well. So first and foremost, I really appreciate Melissa, Dave and Mark, your your work with Athena and her her team and board members on on doing this. I know you know, it's just a challenge. I mean, you're you're working with a a difficult population, you know, as your clientele. And you know, the the pressure really mounts when you get to this time of year and the temperatures at night are dropping and you know, they're they're trying to help as many people as possible get housed overnight. And so I appreciate what what they're doing and and all the work that you put into getting us to this point where we actually have something that's reasonable to consider. And I'll just echo too. I mean, I think you know, the reality is we wouldn't be having this conversation if it weren't for the ARPA money. And I think that's clear to Community Lifeline. And I I think that goes for us as well as the city and and, you know, I think there's you know, we have some capacity to do it. I think it's a reasonable request that Melissa has been able to work on and 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 get in front of us. And you know, and I think there's still a lot of decisions that need to be made at the city with regards to their task force and those recommendations and just sort of how they're going to go about that. And so I'd rather, I'd rather let them work through that process and take care of the most immediate need, which is getting up to thirty five overnight at Community Lifeline. And this this funding, along with what the city is willing to offer, gets us there. And then I think that gives us all a little bit of breathing room to really evaluate those task force recommendations. And you know, so I'm certainly more interested in funding overnight winter shelter operation than I am a mitigation site at this point. And so if the city feels like, you know, they want to reserve some of their remaining ARPA money to to go on that journey, I think that's that's their prerogative. And you know, we'll see how those deliberations go, but I I think is is for the here and now. We have an opportunity to get that capacity increased. We have a plan that is, I think, reasonable in scope and and cost. And so I'm I'm willing to, based on what our staff has put together and those parameters, you know, to to make this investment in Community Lifeline so that so that they can get that accomplished over the next few months and let everybody else figure out what their role and and responsibilities are as as it relates to the homeless response program.
So just a a little quick day update on numbers. Melissa originally had helped them come up with a proposal for seventy seven thousand, one fifty four. If we take a month off of that, it's about sixty six thousand, one thirty two. If the city contributes twenty, that would leave us at about forty six thousand, one thirty two.
I'm good with that.
I'm comfortable with that.
So I will work with Melissa since she has the relationship with Community Lifeline. Sorry, Melissa and Dave, but need your help on that one. And and I will confirm with Jeff Knighton, the City of Shelton, that they are going to get his city council to contribute twenty. And then bring it before the board. Thinking that it's going to be and can help me out here, December sixth.
Twelve six.
Twelve six, okay. All six. Alrighty.
I do see that the the mayor is on. Also, if we want to ask him any questions. Sorry, Eric, throw you under the bus.
I don't, do we have any questions for Mayor Nisco? I don't know if anybody else does, but commissioners, any?
I don't have any, no.
Okay.
Ready?
Okay, anything else, Mark?
Uh, nothing. Thank you.
Okay, just go on quickly to Commissioner discussion, any any Commissioner discussion items? I do have one. A, two years ago, we did a Thanksgiving Day proclamation. Any interest in, I I talked to Mackenzie and she was able to dust off what we did in twenty twenty. Any interest in adding that to tomorrow's agenda?
I don't remember what it was, I'm sorry.
Oh, it was just a, it was
Were we freeing a turkey? I don't remember.
No, but that would be a fun, I know that would be a fun thing to do. I mean, I I could think of a few turkeys I'd like to set free, so.
What was it, Commissioner? What did we? Just a declaration of thankfulness or?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know why I can't remember.
Yeah, just recognizing sort of the history of Thanksgiving, our gratitude, and then just a recognition of folks that are either going without or have to be at work serving our community on that day.
I support it.
Okay, and Mackenzie can, excuse me, can circulate as well. But pretty straightforward. That's all I had. Excellent. All right, moving on to public health, Dave.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing. Just looking back at my notes. The Port of Grapeview project, so this is where the Port of Grapeview had came to the county asking for some assistance and funding to help them maintain their new boat launch that they have. Yeah, and they had asked for some point oh nine funds, did some research on that to determine that we really had to have that included in our economic development. We don't call it a plan. We call it a strategy, I believe. And so that's our SEDS list, basically. So I contacted Jennifer Brea. They received additional information from Jean Farmer from the Port of Grapeview. And I believe that they discussed it in their last meeting and agreed that it would be eligible to be put on the SEDS list. And so this is a request for twenty twenty three. And in order to move forward with that, we would have to, excuse me. In order to move forward with that, we'd have to revise the SEDS list to include that project on the SEDS list. And so I wanted to check with the commissioners and see if they were comfortable. I did receive some documentation from Ms. Farmer regarding the board's approval for this project and wanting to move forward with it. Some minutes that they had, and I believe it was minutes out of their November meeting.
I'm comfortable adding it.
Yeah, I am as well. I am as well, and I think that that's just the process that we have to follow, but I think we were all supportive of the request when it came in prior, so.
And we were all supportive. My question is, are you talking about opening up the SEDS list now? And just adding it? Are you talking about, you know, are we creating a whole new process to open that up? Historically, we've gone through a whole process when you open the SEDS list and put it out.
I believe we did something similar. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Oh, I was just going to say, I I don't think there was a, at least at the Legislative Committee of the EDC, I don't think there was a real interest in opening up more broadly. I think it was just because we had to fulfill this for the oh nine requirements. So I I think they were also kind of like thought we could do this on our own and just add it on our own without going through them, but it's kind of a unique circumstance.
I'm good with it just being a special.
Okay, so Commissioner Netherland, I'm going to follow the the similar process I believe that we did for the Port of Allen before. So I will, I will work with Diane to make sure that I I do it correctly.
Yeah, I just don't want to be accused of doing something specific outside of what we've always done historically and set a new precedence. You know, and every, if usually when you do open it up, everybody has the right to put a project in. So we don't want to deny somebody else the same right that we're giving somebody. That's all I'm saying. If we do it, let's open it up and let everybody put their two cents in and for their projects. So you're going to be going out for the oh nine notification. It'd be fair if everybody else that was going to apply for it had the same opportunity. And again, we're talking about something that just passed, the request passed. We've had this in for months, well before the request passed. And if the request was only passed this month.
What do you mean?
Well, that's an odd function. The request to ask for this, this money from their board wasn't approved before coming to us, before us doing all the work. It was approved th- this month.
So just to to follow up on that with a little additional detail, when I was talking with Ms. Farmer about the the request, I was asking for some documentation to just make sure that that all of the pieces were were there. And so when she provided me with the documentation, she provided me with the minutes for that of a of a board meeting that actually came after the request. So in discussions with her, it sounded like they had discussed it prior, but it was not formally documented in the minutes. And so she formally documented it in the minutes at the next regular meeting that they had.
Yeah, two meetings or so later. But again, I just want to make sure we go through the same process that we open it up to anybody that wants to do it and just be fair. That's all I want. I am in favor of spending the money and giving it to them. That's not a problem with me. Just want to make sure we follow a a process and that everybody is eligible.
So Commissioner Netherland, are you, are you comfortable with me researching how we did it for the Port of Allen?
Yeah, however, we've done it in the past. I'm I'm comfortable with that. If we can show that that's how we've done it, it's in our past precedent. It doesn't bother me at all, no matter what it is.
Right, I'll do that. Thank you. That's all I had now, I promise.
All good. All right, thanks, Mark. Dave?
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. So we have two items and then a kind of another follow-up item. So I'll lead off, but our first item. A while back, we put in a request for proposals to finish out the MOU or MOA with the Squawson Tribe on data gathering. We've had two qualifying applications that have come in. We scored those applications. The top string one is in your packet. We had several of us look at those proposals, and this one really stood out. So what we're asking for is to put this on the action agenda tomorrow so we can get a contract done and start working on this data piece.
All good with me. Did we put this in the twenty three budget?
No, this is not in the twenty three budget.
So maybe have Jennifer hop back on before she click send over to IT to have it posted and you can figure that out. I don't know, Mark, what do you think?
I'd want to talk with Jen first, but yeah.
I'm here, Commissioners, and I missed what it was because I was making the changes on the, that we made in the twenty three budget. So so what is it that you would like to add?
So we have a RFP that's coming back for some contract work on our MOA with the Squawson Island Tribe. And so Dave's budget impact, it's looking like just under forty six thousand dollars. And so that wasn't included in any discussion for the twenty three budget. And so just wanting to have a quick conversation about how you'd like to approach.
So the the MO MOA is not, so we're not going to receive forty six thousand from the Squawson?
No. We're going to actually pay forty six thousand dollars for a consultant to come in and help us satisfy the conditions that were defined within the MOA that the county would do.
Okay, so we're adding forty six thousand to professional services in health?
Not in health. It's really, this is really a planning function or it doesn't really have a health nexus. I've just been working on it.
So I will work with you to see, because that would be Cal's budget that it would go into then.
Okay, I will add that forty six thousand into professional services in in DCD, and I'll wait to hear from you, Mark, on on which portion of DCD that goes into. That good, Commissioners?
Great, yep. Otherwise, all good with me. Commissioners?
Yep.
Hi, this is Cal. Uh, I, would that be non-departmental? I'm not understanding how this should be out of DCD budget.
It's actually for wire, right?
It's for rail work, yes.
I mean, I think either way, we're going to fund it out of general fund. We're not going to, not just going to ding your budget, Cal, but we'll we'll cover it, but it's where it has, where it has to live for budgeting purposes.
Oh, maybe non-departmental would be the place to put it for for twenty three because we don't want to overinflate DCD's expenditures. I wouldn't think if it's not that would typically come out of there. What do you think, Mark?
Uh, yeah, that 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 would work for me.
Okay, I will increase non-departmental by forty six thousand. And if something comes up, we can always move it later on.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing we have is Melissa.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Afternoon. One really, really quick item, just to let you all know that we've received an additional application for the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board. We have one vacant citizen position for which we received an application. So the request here is just for Commissioner discussion. If you need to schedule an interview.
So Melissa, do we have a vacancy in this district?
It is in, yes.
And it's in district, it's in District one?
It's District two, I believe.
Uh, it looks like they live in Allen.
Is that District two?
One.
One, oh.
So is currently that's filled by Chief Bachan.
I got the districts wrong. I thought that she Okay, so we actually then, we wouldn't be able to interview her.
So I think we have a vacancy
I
in District three.
Would that be Allen?
We, no, that's the, that's the city and surrounding.
Okay.
And we just filled the vacancy from my district, District two, with Amanda Gonzalez.
Yeah, so we'd have to go back out into District three or make sure that that they know that it's District three, which is mine. So it'd be Shelton and surrounding area.
Okay, my apologies. I thought that Amanda was District three. Okay. Okay, um, okay, well then they are, I think the application's still out. So we can push out something else to fill that vacancy where it is.
That'd be great.
Okay. Next item, so this wasn't on the agenda, but we wanted to just brief the board and keep you in the loop on some of the things that we've been working on. We've been very busy the last two, three, maybe even four months on an increasing caseload of TB, tuberculosis tuberculosis cases. We don't want to create a panic. It's not anything to panic about. We don't have a very high active case count right now. We're currently at five. Really where a lot of the work has gone into is in contact tracing. So we have five people who live in large households. So I think one is twelve people, another is eleven. There's a lot of coordination that goes into getting these people tested so that we can determine if they have active TB as well, or if they just have been exposed and are latent TB. In either case, there is still a treatment and the medication cycle associated with that. So I would be remiss not to acknowledge our nursing staff and all of the front office and interpreters who have been involved in this. It's been a lot of very quick, very fast-paced work. We're a small team, but we're very mighty. We're at a stage where we're kind of wrapping up the household contacts right now. So making appointments with them to get their blood draws. If those blood draws are positive, then they also have to get a chest X. So, uh, making appointments with them to get their blood draws, uh, if those blood draws are positive, then they also have to get a chest X-ray. Which means we also have to, um, work with them to get primary care providers and. There's a, there's a lot of people, but there's also a lot of additional barriers, um, with language barriers. So we've had interpretation in Spanish, mom, con ho ball, um, that's been needed for that. Again, working with, um, healthcare providers to get them to take on these patients as primary care, so that they can do the chest X-rays. And they can also prescribe the medication that's needed. We've also had a lot of barriers with, with financial burdens, um, a lot of people who don't have insurance, so. It sounds, you know, there's a lot of people, a lot of barriers, we've really been working through those, uh. The priority has been to get through the household contacts right now, and then eventually we'll move into the next phase. Which is work sites, schools, if that's needed, um. And we're working really closely with Mason Health and with Peninsula Community Health Services to kind of get through some of those things. And help streamline and expedite the process. Um, and we're also kind of in the background also working on, uh, an educational piece. So obviously, the priority has been getting people treated and tested as quickly as possible. But we're also working with our new health educator, very excited, um, she started last week. And has really hit the ground running, working on doing educational components, things that we can push out into the community. We're really trying to utilize video, um, especially with some of our populations that don't speak a written language. So that's kind of where we are right now. We are really anticipating the circles to kind of grow a little bit as we identify more close contacts. But the state has also been very helpful in, in helping us determine if they can send people out to help with contact tracing. That is just kind of where we are, and we wanted to assure you that we're working on it. And there really isn't anything that we don't wanna create a panic, we're just, we're just working on getting contacts tested, um, and treated. And happy to answer any questions.
No, not a question so much as just a, a comment, you, you mentioned our nursing staff, and they always just do such a tremendous job, but I. I was out, um, I was out in Belfair on, uh, Friday last week and, uh, in the QFC. And I bumped into Rebecca, uh, and Alex from your team, and they were picking some stuff up there and ready to head out to, uh. Covington to, to pick up some medication, it sounded like, and so just.
So, thank you.
Really, you know, just incredible work that they do, just willing to go wherever it takes to get our community, what they need to, to make it through these situations, so. Just a, just a hat tip to them, I appreciate them being out there and, and doing that work.
Yeah. I'll, I'll ditto that, I mean, walking the streets of Shelton, I'll see. Our staff out there working with people, so we have amazing people here in, that. Work for Mason County and definitely your, your staff is, is right there at the top.
Small but mighty.
So Commissioner, I have a question for, uh, uh, staff, I'm not sure whether to talk with health. Uh, or planning building or even the roads, but, uh, I just got contacted and out in Belfair on Highway Three. Uh, the creek has burst over and is affecting the buildings and stuff, uh, there. Which, who would I be talking to about this? I can understand the Highway Three would be the state for what's on the road. But this is happening up above before it and coming down, uh, who would I be speaking with?
Commissioner, is, is it, this is on private property?
Yes.
So I, I imagine that's gonna probably be a public, is it crossing the highway and that, that's what's causing the problem?
Yeah, well, the fact is, it, it's before the highway and it's backing up at the highway and affecting the buildings. And now it's, uh, also leaving a big puddle in the middle of the highway. Even without the rain, it's, the, the stream itself is just. Flattened out over the years, I guess. Does any type of help you can give me to, where to, to direct these people, try and help them, uh, the pictures they just sent me are not good.
I think, I mean, if you could forward that to me and Kel and Loretta, and we can kind of take it from there.
Okay, I will do that, thank you.
Do you include that, might, bring me in that too, please, Commissioner?
Great, anything else commissioners? Uh, Melissa and Dave, do you need anything from us on, on the public health issues that you were just talking about? Is there anything we can do to help if you don't have a list or anything right now, that's fine, but just.
No, we, we've been looking at if we need to bring in extra staffing and if we need to bring in someone from the state. So they're on standby, but at this point, we really have taken care of the direct cases, they're getting their treatment. The, uh, so we're down in that next phase of things, and right now, we've pretty much got it handled.
Okay, great. I'll certainly keep us posted. Okay, wish there's anything else for them?
No.
Yeah, thank you. And last but certainly not least, Loretta?
Morning commissioners or afternoon, sorry, it's gonna, a long morning, obviously. We'll try and make up some ground here real quick. Our first action item, we recently were made aware of some additional funding. Through our County Road Administration Board and our RAP program, and Mike's here to share that information with you.
Good afternoon, um, basically what we're requesting is for the board to execute a contract with the County Road Administration Board. To fund Bear Creek to Auto Improvement Project, that's mile post zero point four three to one point zero two. This project consists of realigning this section of road and improving, uh, the line of sight and, uh. Making much better curve for, for the speed limits on there. The funding impact will be, uh, the total estimated project is six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And the RADA funding will be five hundred ninety-four, which leaves us, uh, eighty-six thousand dollars for match on the road fund. So we would, uh, we're, we're ripping the tear and wanting to get this project, so if we could get this, uh, agreement signed, we can move forward.
Good with me, commissioners?
Yes.
Yeah, that's exciting.
It is very exciting, this is a project that I believe we received, the department received funding for, wow. Many, many years ago, probably Commissioner Netherland, you might recall that. And, uh, I believe we ended up turning back some funds at that time, so. We're looking forward to making good use of the money this go around and getting this done. Okay, so next up commissioners, we had a couple of discussion follow-up items, and I believe we covered the. Uh, the discussion about the use of diversion funds during our budget. Uh, briefing, unless there's anything additional that you care to talk about on that. Alright, and then the other item commissioners, we previously brought to you. The annual rate increase using the CPIU that is nine point one percent. And you asked us to bring back some additional information. One of the questions that we had last go around was whether or not that. That was built into our budget assumptions, and yes, it was built into our budget assumptions. So the budget that you had before you assumed a rate increase of around nine percent based on the April CPIU. Last Tuesday or Wednesday morning, I believe it was, Richard and I reviewed. Some basic rate information with Mark, and Mark had direction for us to make some. Revisions to the spreadsheets to present to commissioners, and we're still in the process of that, so, um. Just wanted to check in with you about that, our schedule, we would be briefing on, uh, the twelfth. And bringing back for board action on the twentieth. And actually, it's possible we would have. Briefing materials on the fifth, but absolutely on the twelfth. And certainly can speak to any questions you may have at this time about the, the rates and the. Approach at this point.
I'd be curious to see what you have to present and then.
Go from there.
Right, so you guys would be ready on the twelfth of the latest?
Yes.
Okay. Sounds good.
You know, I know that there's, there's a lot that has to go into this and everything, but I just, the nature of how we operate, that doesn't give us a ton of time. Um, before the end of the year, and so I just, again, appreciating all the constraints on your time. If there's any way to get that on the fifth, uh, that would be, that'd be ideal, um, just based on end of the year stuff.
You bet. And certainly questions to come, I'm sure, from materials that are presented and whatever follow-up. And that's all on our calendar commissioners.
Okay. Uh, commissioners, anything for Loretta?
Well, thank you for. People coming out and, and fixing the potholes, there's a, a ton of them all over the place, but I've noticed that they're all getting. Repaired, so I appreciate our, our, our team out there, so pass that along, please.
You bet, we will, and, uh, just along those lines, Commissioner Trask had a couple of really nice compliments. From community members about the work that our crew took on at Culture Creek. And so there were some drainage improvements there, and it may seem like a small thing, but. The neighborhood and the community was super grateful for that work and delineators that were put out to. Brighten up the road during the dark hours. And also had some really nice feedback from the Skokomish Farms folks. In appreciation for the conversion for the, from the gravel road to a chip seal road. So it's, um, really, really nice to hear that those efforts are. Are, um. People like it, people are happy, so good things.
It's only a small thing if it's not in your yard.
Right, exactly, yeah, so hats off to Mike for the design work. Jeremy for helping make sure it all happens, and obviously our crews and our supervisors. It's, um, a big team effort, much appreciated.
Alright. Alright, anything else? Alright, excellent.
Alright.
Uh, Trish, go ahead, Laura.
That's it, thank you commissioners.
Uh, alright commissioners, we've hit the end of our agenda, um, there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, movement second that we adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries, and we'll see everybody in the morning.
Good luck.